So I'd like to convene this meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board for the February eleventh. Meeting to order, I've got it as seven oh one uh roll call vote for attendance. Nope, looks like Bill's is hopping on, so Theo Noel.
Here.
Matt Lowry.
Yeah.
Kevin York.
Here.
And Bill Spalding. Bill. Uh Bill, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so Bill Spalding is also here, so everyone, every all all members present. So uh move to approval of the meeting minutes from the January twenty eight, twenty twenty five. Playing board meeting about any members of the boards have board have any comments? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept the meetings as presented?
They're moved.
So moved by Bill, I've got a second by Matt, so uh to approve the meeting minutes from the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting, Kevin York.
Yes.
Theo Noel.
Uh I abstain.
Matt Lowry.
Yes.
And Bill Spalding.
Yes.
And myself was a yes, so the uh motion passes uh four to nothing. So moving on to item number three, the housing production plan progress report. Uh I believe Sam, you're you're spearheading this, so can I kick it over to your you?
Yes, I'm happy to to get us started on that, so um the consultant is on. Um is he's Noah Harper and he is happy to, I'm sure I take over. Um and kind of give you the overview, progress update um on where the group is and the status of it, um I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'd really like to just go ahead and defer to him so he can get started on his report.
Thanks, Sam, for that introduction, so Noah, I'll turn it over to you if you want to give us an update on where the progress for the housing production plan is.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, thank you, Jim, I'm yeah, happy to be here, Noah Harper, I I work at the firm JM Goldson, we're contracted with the town, been working on the housing production. Production plan, I work on a lot of housing plans in the area. Um and it's been, yeah, really fun to get to know the community and next week we'll be becoming in person for a tour, so really looking forward to that, to take some pictures and sort of ground truth, a lot of the data that I'll talk about very briefly tonight. Um to um to sort of accentuate the plan. And I'll say for uh for Theo and I think Gail also on the on the working group hours on the call tonight. You might have, you've heard these things before, I was just gonna share some data from the housing needs assessment portion of the plan and review the schedule too to show you guys where we are with it. And in big picture, the 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 reason for this is uh at the end of the plan, we need the planning board and the select board to vote to or the the town council in your case to vote to adopt the housing production plan. So I wanted to get you guys a little uh sort of acquainted with it earlier on in the process to start to get your questions and and thinking about it and it's by no means the last chance, you'll get a chance to look at it. We're gonna schedule a in-person community forum, I believe it's in person. Um hope targeting for April right now, where we can have more folks come and and talk through some of the goals and strategies we'll be working on at our very next meeting. So I'm gonna share my slides if it's okay and uh go from that and then would love to take your questions about some of the housing needs and and the process. Just gonna request that there. Awesome. And we'll see if my screen shares okay. Are you able to see my screen okay? Cool, thanks. Alright, yeah, present the housing needs assessment and questions and discussion, so this is the overall timeline, we've been working on this since August. Since uh we did some of the groundwork. Worked on this data heavy portion in the fall. Presented it with with the working group and uh went over some revisions with staff, so I think it's in a really good good place, if you guys would like to read it and review yourself, I'm gonna pull out some highlights tonight. And where we are now is sort of this engagement and drafting phase, which uh is really gonna be bookended by that in-person or the community event I mentioned. A- as well as goals and strategies, which we'll be working on at our very next meeting. Coming up with those, revising them a few times, vetting them with the community, and then we'll have our housing production plan all put together. So the housing needs assessment portion, that's really looking at democratic, so excuse me, demographic and and housing data in Wakefield. And I I would love to just plug, there's two really great sort of companion planning documents to look at, you guys have your your older housing production plans, we looked at that and said, how is how is Wakefield changed over time? And then also the uh the twenty twenty four Greater Boston Housing Report Card. Which looks at us all as a as a metro area and kind of contextualizes some of the trends we're gonna talk about today in the in the bigger picture. And so in the in the written document, really, really tried to sort of talk about some of this data in conversation with that and think about the trends with with the bigger picture. But I'd say the the big the big idea here on your population, on your historic and projection project changes is a a little bit of growth according to Mastod's model and and UMass also does their own projections. And actually project a slight a slight stagnation or or even decline, you're at twenty seven thousand ninety folks right now. Um and and Mastod at least is projecting slight growth of about two thousand people. And I'll talk in a little bit about about who those households are and and planning for them in a moment. Tenure is is just a fancy word for the split between homeowners and renters. Really interestingly here, the last HPP done in in twenty fourteen, it was closer to eighty percent homeowners and twenty percent renters. Uh now it's it's the homeowner share has decreased by about ten percent. Um with with some of the new housing being built in, so now it's more seventy thirty. Which has been a a little bit of a trend there, we've observed. I think some, one of the biggest things and and you'll notice this if you take a peek at the Greater Boston Report too is is the decrease in household size. Um it's not just happening in Wakefield, but one to two-person households represent a little over sixty percent of your households in town. And that's not just in Wakefield, it's happening all over the place, it's it's really two factors, one, it's it's an increase in in senior populations as as folks age. But it's also, people aren't having as many kids as they used to, and that could go back to go back to housing affordability challenges as as one one reason, but we're releasing a whole lot of one and two-person households. And so there's there's a potential there for a mismatch in terms of what is the new housing that you're building, is it is it oversized, does it have a lot more bedrooms and and take up a lot more land than maybe than maybe is necessary? But that'll be something for our goals and strategies piece, which we're not, we're not quite at yet. Units in structure, interestingly too, so you've you've added more rental units, you've also added more more multifamily units too in recent years. One unit detached, that's your sort of typical single-family home sitting like all by itself on a lawn. Uh one unit attached would be a unit that's uh say like a duplex that maybe has has its own uh own own land on each side or or a row house or a town home. That's that's, we've seen a lot of increase particularly in the twenty to forty nine and the fifty plus units, which has been reflected, I think, in some of our our surveys, a lot of people talking about a lot of change in town, a lot of new development and some concerns regarding that. But yeah, you're you're about fifty fifty split in terms of single-family and multifamily, which I think going back to what we we heard in the survey about the identity of the town, there's kind of like the the data that we're looking at from the from the Census Bureau and some other sources, and then maybe some uh some conceptions about about Wakefield being, you know, mostly homeowners or single-family homes, but you have a really good mix. Gonna talk a little bit about just housing costs and and affordability over time, because I think that's sort of the the number one question and the concern that we're all we're all here and and thinking about. The median two-bedroom rent when we pulled this way back in December was two thousand four hundred and seventy-four. And median, we like to use that instead of average, because an average can kind of pull the number up and distort a little bit, median's just the the middle value there. So interestingly, like, we'll we'll get to this in a second, the median rent is is actually pretty affordable to the to the median household in Wakefield. And that's not the problem, it's homeownership, just to give you a sneak peek. But this this graph is all about how have how have wages and rent changed in the past ten years and interestingly, like, the buying power of the average wage in Wakefield has gone down a little bit relative to the rent going up in in recent years. So your dollars maybe not going quite as far. And I'll I'll show you the the rent graph in just a second. Of course, we also did this on homeownership, and I think you can see a super, super stark increase in home values. Done a few interviews with local residents and and spoke to someone who purchased their home way back in nineteen ninety for a hundred and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Well, by the last HPP, that had increased to four hundred thousand and and as of as of December twenty twenty four, it basically doubled to eight hundred and five thousand five hundred dollars, so a really, really huge increase in your home values there. You have a lot of people that might be cash poor, but but home rich. Um and we, this brown line down here are are condo units, just as a moment of comparison, they're they're increasing too, they're they're maybe not quite as expensive as a single-family home, but it's still getting up there. But I think the uh, yeah, it's great that a lot of these these homes are are really, really, really valued highly, but say you're on a on a fixed income or you're lower moderate income, well, if your house is eighty is eight hundred thousand dollars, my property taxes might be a little more, a little more difficult to manage, and and this graph is really just showing how has the property tax rate changed over time? Well, it's actually increased very slightly, so you can say, oh, like taxes haven't changed too much. But if my assessed residential value has has basically doubled or tripled in that same time, I'm being taxed, I'm effectively paying so much more, and so you might have a lot of folks that are that own their own homes, but property taxes can be a real burden. And I think that can lead to some concerns about change and um a lot of the, a lot of the downstream things we hear about why housing and new housing in particular can be maybe stressful or difficult, like uh impacts on on services, especially if you're feeling really stressed and constrained by property taxes right now. Vacancy, this is more just thi- thinking about where your housing market is now and had the pleasure of interviewing a few realtors in the area that are working in Wakefield, so they've been super helpful in ground truthing this data. Um effectively, five to eight percent for a homeownership unit is a healthy vacancy rate, that means there's a little wiggle room in the market. Um yours is very, very constrained and it's it's not unusual, it's it's like this all over Greater Boston, um but at one percent. I think interestingly, and I don't have a great answer for this right now, but your your rental vacancy rate is actually higher than that sort of healthy rate, you're like targeting about eight percent for for healthy rentals. One theory that I have, all of this is taken from from census data, that's that's from a point in time and this might have been when a good amount of units maybe were were just finished, but they weren't quite leased up, and so they were counted as vacant. Um but yeah, if anyone has any thoughts at the end of the presentation on on why your your rental vacancy might be so high, would love to hear your theories. Homeownership opportunities, month supply on the market, that just basically means how long it takes to sell a home. Here's, this is uh how it sort of fluctuated over time. When in twenty twenty-two hit a hit like a rock bottom in terms of home just really being sold really, really quickly. So there are folks buying them. In October twenty twenty-four, when we pulled the data, there's now submitted one point two months supply of single-family homes, so it taking about about a month. A month and a and a couple weeks to to sell it, which is just very fast. Five or six month supply is another indicator, just like vacancies of a healthy market, so seeing seeing a lot of demand and constrained supply, we have a big takeaway there. This is my my complicated graph, just wanna walk you guys through it, this is about various households' ability to purchase a home. The very dark blue bar here is the town median household, the town median household earns about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. Um this this brown bar at the top is how much it would cost to buy a a mortgage, a single-family home, and we put a lot of, put a lot of different uh factors in there, like uh mortgage insurance and and all those things, so you need an eye-popping two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars a year to buy a home in Wakefield today and people obviously are, but it may not be be residents or folks that are low or moderate income wanting to stick around. Many, many, many different households, including all these different demographic groups, low income um of different sizes just don't make enough to buy a home, so you have folks that are that are renting because there might not be an option. Or you have people who bought into Wakefield when it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars and living in that too. And and buying a condo, it's it's not quite as high, it's about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, but there's still a seventy thousand dollar gap to be able to afford, and and our definition of afford is without becoming cost burden, so without paying more than thirty percent of your gross income on rent, there's a there's a big gap here. I uh yeah, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollar gap. As I mentioned earlier, and uh this is pulling in some different rental data, because the census has their own numbers and and don't wanna mix apples and oranges. Census always underestimates, in my experience, rental rental amounts, so I think it's sort of a conservative look at it. Your median household, your median renter household could afford your seventeen hundred dollar a month rent for that that median census home, but as we saw on on the market data, which is sourced from a a a site called Rentometer, which I think is a little more accurate and up to date. Um I I think that this is likely much higher. But a lot of your lower-income households, still particularly those earning less than eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars, which is a fifty percent area median income or AMI, um would be cost burden, would struggle with even these like very low census rents. Um by all by all indications, there's there are gonna be more folks that are struggling than than are on this graph. It's it's easier to run in Wakefield, I I anticipate, than than obviously purchasing a purchasing a home, but it's it's not cheaper, not cheap by a long shot. So that the number that uh that idea of cost burden that I just mentioned there, paying more than thirty percent of your income. This is a a chart breaking that down, and the the big the big idea here is that there's about three thousand households in Wakefield today, so not people looking to move to Wakefield, people who live in town right now, which is a little over twenty-five percent, that are cost burden, paying more than one-third of their gross income on rent. It's forty percent of renters and it's about twenty percent of homeowners. Um and and especially concentrated on the lower end of the income spectrum. So when we get to talking about goals and strategies with the with the working group in a in a month or or a few weeks, actually next week, we'll be thinking about how do we help these lower-income populations or households in particular? As you get higher and higher, the uh the folks that are not cost burden, this big big navy blue bar right here, it uh it usually increases and and Wakefield's no different. But there are a lot of households that are struggling to make ends meet, struggling to cover housing costs right now and um that doesn't take into account people who maybe wanna move to Wakefield, um there's a there's a big need there. The other piece, and it's it's kind of the 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 frustrating thing, because you have uh the state's list of affordable housing, the subsidized housing inventory, which lists uh one thousand twenty-eight units as of, I think, October, so made it may have been updated with, I think, a few more coming online. The the problem, of course, is that not all of those units listed on the subsidized housing inventory are actually affordable units. And Housing Navigator Massachusetts is a great resource and um it's it's also mentioned in that Greater Boston Housing Report Card. They estimate more like four hundred and fifty-six affordable units, so four hundred and fifty-six affordable homes right now. Um and in need of about three thousand households that are that are struggling with with affordable housing. This twenty-four sixty number, those are the, that's the amount of those three thousand households that earn less than, less than eighty percent median income, which is that traditional definition or the the legal definition, excuse me, of of who would qualify for affordable housing, so a big need and and not nearly enough affordable housing. But I wanted to also, and I really appreciated like the the scope for this project also said, look at what we're calling attainable housing too, so there's there's those low and moderate income households that are really struggling, but there's also households that don't make two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, they make a little more than eighty percent AMI. And they're they're effectively locked out of homeownership just because the barrier is is so darn high. Um calling those the middle-income households, people making between, say, a hundred and twenty thousand and and even going up to the two hundred and fifty range. Um they wouldn't qualify for subsidized housing and maybe necessarily don't necessarily need it, but there are about five hundred that that would. They uh they might not want to rent in Wakefield anymore, but don't have an option uh at their price point to purchase, which means they're gonna be looking in other places, and that can be really uh really stressful and and troubling over time. So two two kind of uh parallel problems there. So finally, as I as I sort to wrap this up, we did some estimation of future needs too, looking at those projections I mentioned way back at the beginning. And and essentially said, with those new households, if Wakefield does grow using the Mast dot projection, estimating about nine hundred and eighty-eight new housing units will be needed on top of what you have now. Um and in particular, we estimate those are gonna be serving senior households. It's, you have a lot of of sort of middle-aged households right now, and those folks are gonna age too, and folks are living longer and longer. Um we're gonna, we're gonna see a real need for housing, housing that's gonna serve these this group in particular. Which will be something we we talked about in our golden strategies. And we also just looked at what would those bedroom counts kind of look like, thinking about existing household sizes and and projecting that out to it, a lot of smaller bedrooms for for one and two-person households. Um which maybe it won't reflect what's being built or or exists today. Yeah, just wanted to to show this, the senior housing needs, we also broke it down by by uh income bracket too. I think the big story here is that there's going to be a lot of demand for for lower-income house or for a senior housing that's it's affordable, but I do wanna note, like, while I'm highlighting seniors here in this, there's huge need for for families, for young families in particular, like to to help them as well, and we wanna, we wanna really focus on seniors, but also make sure that we don't focus on other groups too. Or don't lose sight on those two, because we wanna think about the next generations as well. Um but there's there's a lot of competing needs, and I think that's something we're gonna be discussing next week in our in our in-person working session. So in summary, decreasing household sizes and honestly, pretty sixty percent of your your households are one and two people right now. To sales always blows my mind, you've seen the growth of multifamily and rental stock, and we've seen that reflected in our community engagement. Um homeownership opportunities are probably unaffordable for someone looking to buy today, or or first, maybe someone's kids who wanna buy their own place in in Wakefield. Doesn't mean there's not a lot of people who bought when it was a hundred and seventy or a hundred and forty thousand, you know, twenty or thirty years ago. And there's a deficit, I would say, of about twenty-four hundred income-restricted affordable units for people that would qualify for it today. That are that are paying more than than a third of their income on rent. And and simultaneously, a lack of the sort of I like in in housing, we use the the term missing middle for middle-sized housing, there's a sort of like missing middle for for middle-income folks to to be able to buy something, and maybe it's not uh a standalone house on its own plot of land, maybe it's a also a sort of a lower lower-density, two or three or four, four-unit home that when you build on on smaller parcels of land and you and you divide it up, it it becomes much more affordable and and those opportunities grow, so we'll be discussing that next week. And yeah, just wanna say projected senior household growth, affordable and accessible housing to accommodate that. And also not not forgetting that there are a whole lot of other populations that we we do dive into in the report as well. Um yeah, I'd just say the on the accessibility piece, one thing that I see again and again when we run surveys, we ran a survey from I'd say about, I'm gonna say like mid-November to the end of Janu- to the, sorry, excuse me, the the beginning of January. People were generally pretty happy with the conditions of their homes. But the one thing, and this happened over in Danvers too, was they said, I'm not so sure my house will meet my mobility needs in the next ten years. You know, having uh some steps or maybe a a kitchen or a bathroom that would be difficult to get a wheelchair in. So that's that's another thing I think to think about as as a growing need with the growing senior population, and people right now who maybe are 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 having trouble getting around their home, and something that we can we can work on. So I think with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and would love to invite any questions or comments, anything I can answer or or thoughts.
So were any members of the planning board uh have any questions or comments related to the presentation?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation, um. I know Noah, a lot of the work that goes into this, um is a lot of surveys, a lot of information coming in, the census and all that. Um no surprise to see the need for senior housing, and it would be good somehow to find out um in our town, the possibilities of where senior housing can happen, and I'm not sure exactly how the report is gonna play out as far as identifying anything like that, um excuse me, it's getting over cold. It, is there anything in the report that will identify different areas of town that will um fit for different voids within the plan?
Yeah, I would say, and I appreciate the the question. The goals and strategies chapter we're gonna be working on just next week, I think is gonna be where something like that would be. And in a few interviews, I got some recommendations on on parcels around town, and I'll have to review them, because I've forgotten the exact details, but that's where we will be putting uh even a map that has a few highlighted in in blue, for example, and says like, here's some opportunity sites, and they could be town-owned land or or privately-owned parcels too, that we could say, hey, the town's gonna focus on building here. And that's what um what HLC, the Housing Office, really looks for, is the town identifying some real places where it wants to build housing and and helps uh ensure that the plan is is certified, and it means if you guys are under ten percent, have a little bit of wiggle room and in terms of uh denying, you know, potential unfriendly forty B projects. So we'll definitely be getting, I think, into the weeds on that next week, and and we'll be doing as I mentioned, that that community forum, we'll be sharing, I think, some of those parcels and trying to get feedback on it in April, so we can make sure it's right, or if there are other ideas to add things, so we definitely encourage and invite everyone to attend there and and provide their feedback to.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that, I've seen some other plans and it's great to to look at like where in each town or city they're identifying where different developments um can happen, so I'm looking forward to seeing that, thank you.
Any other members of the planning board?
Um yeah, I um I would just say, I I found it um really, really um interesting, and uh the the process to develop the housing production plan has really, really been, I think, thoughtful and productive. Um uh and particularly like, when you really get into a lot of the detail of the the needs assessment, I think, I think it's it really does show sort of all all the nuance and the balance that that we really have to uh be thinking about, um I um and I I think it is precisely that that uh that split of smaller households and aging households needing smaller units, um but also at the same time uh trying to plan ahead for some smaller homeownership or some other types of housing, so that smaller, younger households uh have have ha- have housing uh that's available, because I um I think that what's what's most striking is um that you need two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to afford a home in Wake in Wakefield, and I I think if if we looked at income distributions, we would see how few households are earning that. So um it really does mean, at present, so much of Wakefield is really unattainable um for existing or future uh people moving into town. And when when we think about uh sort of culture and community and and um like, I think that's that's a that's a really big uh kind of hidden uh shadow looming uh o- over over the town, um the um uh there was, if if you wouldn't mind going, like, the 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 last chart you showed, um the the two seventy-two and the the middle income uh income range, like
Let's see, yeah, let me, let me know.
Yeah, 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 no, you just, you just went right past it, the this one, um like, so I mean, and that's that one nineteen to one seventy-eight, that's the that that's the great majority of Wakefield, right? Um so, and that that I I think really, really puts it in stark relief, um uh where where the problem, where the problem was, um. But like, if you were, if you're trying to get to how to build the household, the housing that uh all of us in that that income bracket uh can afford, yeah. Um are we gonna talk about uh like strategies or uh uh tricks, tools that municipalities can develop in partnership with the state uh to to in addition to identifying locations?
Oh yeah, absolutely, and we'll we'll kind of separate the 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 plan or the the goals and strategies into planning stuff, local initiatives, which could be a little broader, what should be things the town and state could do. And then a third bucket is called, just like capacity and co- uh collaboration, so local nonprofits, state entities, um other groups to work with, and uh also think making sure there's staff to to make sure it happens too. So try to be a little comprehensive and think about it from different approaches.
Yeah, okay, that that's helpful, thank you.
Any other members of the planning board and have anything else they would like to ask or comment on? Uh not seeing anything, in that case, Noah, I I did have a question related to for the strategies and mitigations, with the caveat that I understand the planning or the housing production plan is not complete. Is there envisioned to be anything related to zoning as a, you know, or things that this board would need to take action on in order to address the housing production plan needs?
Absolutely, and and yeah, I would say, I'm not quite sure what will be in there yet, because we haven't had that discussion. But every housing plan I've worked on has a has a variety of of several zoning things to to take up and and shares with the the planning board to consider. Um things, if you're trying to build smaller housing, thinking about minimum lot size and parking requirements and some things there, but I'm gonna, or the the approach is always to let the working group kind of come up with the ideas, and then we help to to guide and go. I'm gonna, or the, the approach is always to let the working group kind of come up with the ideas and then we help to, to guide and go from there. So can't quite say what we'll be talking about yet, but I think there will be absolutely be some things for you guys to consider down the road.
And i- is, is the, is the nature of the output essentially a, a list of potential strategies that. Are recommendations for the planning board to, to look at, but not necessarily like a, a fully formed product, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, yeah, not necessarily a fo- fully formed product, but certainly a write-up and a few examples of other places that have done something similar. And at the very end, we'll have a sort of action plan implementation matrix, which will say. Strategy one B, do this zoning item, who's gonna be in charge of it? Say the planning, planning staff and then the planning board and thinking about who's gonna be responsible for it. Um, and, and that's something that'll be sort of, uh, distributed across all the different strategies we'll have in there. But it won't be, I think, fully, fully baked. We'll have examples and some guidance, but definitely some leeway for you guys to take a crack at it as well.
And just in case anyone joined late, can you remind everyone the next steps in the, and the, the timeline of when? You think that all of this housing production plan is gonna be completed and. Does, if there's a, have been identified any opportunities for the public to be directly engaged with the development of said plan?
Absolutely. So we are in the, uh, I'll just maybe share my, show the, show the chart one more time to make it, make it a little visual. One moment. Um, essentially, we, we're three quarters of the way through with the housing plan. We are here in, in February. And the goal is really by April, by end of April, to have something really ironed up, or sorry, buttoned up, excuse me. So that then we can share this with you guys and also the town council to get it approved. But, uh, there'll be an in-person, uh, there'll be a community engagement event in April and. Gonna be with Sam, Sam tomorrow to talk about dates and finalize that with the, the working group on, on Tuesday, I believe, when we, when we meet. So we'll have that, that, uh, lined up very soon. We'd love to have as many members of the public and representative of some, from boards and committees there. And then separately after that, in this, in this May time, you'll probably see me again presenting, uh, the final product and I'll. Spend more, most of the time talking about those goals and strategies. And we'll also have a presentation for the county town council as well, uh, who will also be having to vote to adopt it. Uh, but yeah, you guys and, and then we'll be sort of the final step in getting this finished at the town level, looking at that for May. And we can send it off to the state for them to take a look and get it approved.
Okay, uh, in that case, thank you, thank you Noah for the, the update. Um, if you are amenable to it, I was going to propose to allow, uh, a, a limited number of com- or. Questions or anything from the, from the public?
Oh, absolutely. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Yep, so just to set the guidelines, as a reminder, right, no one's voting on anything right now, there is not a definitive plan. There is an ongoing effort associated with developing this, the housing production plan in the meeting. The purpose for this presentation was to keep the planning board updated as that plan is being developed, so. I would invite if any members of the public would wish to, uh, to ask Noah or provide any comments. To, uh, feel free to raise your hand. I will be limiting each participant to one round of comments and three minutes. Um, three minutes, uh, of, of back and forth, just as, out of respect for people's time and given the fact that we're not here to formally adopt anything. So if anyone wishes to raise their hand and for any comment or questions, feel free to do so. I see Eleanor Axelrod, and as a reminder, if you, uh, do want to participate, please. Make sure you turn your camera on, state your name and your address prior to, uh, the speaking, so Eleanor?
Hi, my name's Eleanor Axelrod, nineteen Sheffield Road. Um, I just had a question, um, which was, um. This was very informative, first of all, a really great presentation, Noah. I was curious if, um. You guys actually had any data on how much it costs to build? A home, you know, a standard home, um, a standard apartment, as you're looking at these demographic. Um, desired houses, I think that would be really interesting for us to understand. That's all. You know, so, as an example, like we're talking about senior housing, so. You know, a modest house, two bedrooms or an apartment, two bedrooms. Your family home, you know, just that sort of range and the cost. Thank you.
Absolutely, if you have an art. So I think we, I don't have any numbers off the top of my head, but it is a. Some similar work that our, our firm does, we're doing this over in Acton right now, basically. Looked at all the different housing types and said, maybe you could tweak your zoning to make it easier to build some smaller houses and. Two and three family homes that, like then can build at a lower cost and pass those savings on to folks. I'd say for multifamily, which gets a little more, more denser and complex. Uh, right now, it's about six hundred thousand dollars per unit in our area to build one. Which, um, then if someone's trying to make a profit off it, it's, you're, it's getting pretty expensive pretty fast, which is. I think the, the really big troubling like part of why building new housing is so difficult. Um, and that's a figure from last year, so I'm worried it's only gotten higher and more expensive. But, um, at that smaller, for lack of a better term, more residential range. I think there is an opportunity to build some, some more, uh, naturally affordable or market rate affordable, affordable housing. And that's something that would be really cool to incorporate and put into our goals and strategies and. Hopefully we'll talk about it with the working group next week, so I really appreciate the idea.
Anyone else? Uh, Theo?
Yeah, um, this is kind of just to ask, um, as a, um, if folks have locations or ideas or. Sort of observations about what makes a site good for something versus something else, I, I, um. I know I personally would really welcome sort of that sort of open-ended discussion to think about what. What makes good attributes for, for different kinds of housing, um. Cause I, I, I think that, that would be informative and I think, you know, that's, maybe that's also a question for, for, uh, everyone on the call tonight. If not now, then later for sure.
Yeah, I, I would just add, all, all thoughts and ideas are welcome and, and on the table right now because we haven't written anything down quite yet and we're just in that brainstorming phase. And in particular, sites, sites that could be useful, it'd be really great that we could then hash out and, and look at. Uh, something that we'll be sharing with the working group and isn't quite ready for the public is a chapter called Development Constraints. And that looks at zoning, but also environmental factors, like where your protected open space and. Where maybe, uh, hazardous waste sites are, so we can think about these sites and then look at those, all the great fun maps we put together. And be like, oh, maybe we shouldn't put this one here because it's, it's not as, not as, uh, great for X, Y, or Z reason. So yeah, any, any ideas and for, for light sites and locations are, are welcome and encouraged.
So I don't see anyone raising their hands, so unless anyone's about to raise their hand, uh, I'm going to propose we move, move on to the. To the next item on the agenda? Okay, well Noah, thank you so much. This is very insightful. And I, I'm really excited to see the housing production plan as it continues to be developed and to see the final products.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure. I'm, I'm gonna stay on the call and listen into the next agenda items, which I think will be helpful for, for the work down the road, but. Yeah, it's been a pleasure to take your questions and looking forward to seeing you guys again soon.
Thank you so much. So with that, I'll be closing item number three, the housing production plan update. And moving on to item number four on the agenda, the ADU zoning amendment public forum. So, uh, Sam, I know, I think this is another one that is, uh, I'll be, uh, kicking over to you to, uh, start talking. Um, just as some background for folks before Sam gets rolling, the, uh, the state in late twenty twenty-four passed a law. Making it so, uh, accessory dwelling units or AKA granny flats are allowed as of right, uh, across the Commonwealth. Um, and they set a timeframe of, I, I believe it's already in effect, Sam, correct? And it is a February, it was the third last time we talked? February second, so, uh, for folks who are, uh, calling into this, so. The, the compliance timeframe was not very long and we didn't have the ability to get a, a draft amendment put together before, before it's in effect, so. Accessory dwelling units are allowed as of right in Wakefield as of today, or as of, sorry, February second. So what we have done as a planning board in, in conjunction with Sam as the town planner, is we started looking at. Passing a zoning amendment that would add restrictions to what is allowable right now, uh, based on this state law. So just for, so folks are, are aware, this is not similar to the MBT compliance law. This, the way that it was written is that these are allowed today, so unless we pass. The, uh, any, any, any type of zoning amendment, the, that's only gonna add restrictions, not. Loosen anything up compared to what has already been passed by the state. So just want to make sure everyone understands that. Where we are in terms of the process is the planning board's been working on this since, I want to say, December. And we've had a couple, uh, meetings at the planning board, we've gone through a draft, uh, bylaw amendment. That was referred to the town council, the town council referred it, uh, back to the planning board, uh, last night. And so now we are gonna have a series of public forums prior to a public meeting. With anticipation that this is going to go to the town for the spring town meeting for consideration. So by way of all that introduction, I'll turn it over to Sam if you want to present the proposed accessory dwelling unit by law.
Yes, thank you. That's a great introduction. Um, the, and just remind everybody, make sure it's very clear, this is just proposed. Um, it can change, it likely will change from comments from the public. Um, this is part of why we're having. The two information sessions, there's one tonight, and then there will be a hybrid one on March eleventh. Um, so I'll go ahead and get started. If this will go. Technical, so sorry. Okay, so what is an ADU? Um, in twenty twenty-four, the state law, the Affordable Homes Act was passed. Um, I believe it was August and it allowed. ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units by right. That went into effect on February second, twenty twenty-five. So technically, right now, if you wanted to file a permit, you could, you could get a permit, um. From this town to build an ADU because of the, the Affordable Homes Act, um. By right, so no discretionary zoning. Um, it doesn't have any of the additional criteria that the previous accessory apartments did. Um, and I'm gonna kind of go over some of that here. I have the definition up here, so. And this whole presentation will be available on the website, so don't feel pressured if you miss something. Um, the basics of it is that is, this is something that is a self-contained unit. So you're not, it's not a rooming house, um, and it's not a, or. Single room occupancy, it's not a hotel or anything like that, so it's a self-contained unit for sleeping, cooking and sanitary facilities, which means bathroom and shower. Um, on the same lot as a principal dwelling, so they, it cannot be subdivided as a separate structure. It's a accessory structure to a principal or a primary dwelling. Um. And it maintains a separate entrance, either through shared entry hall or from the exterior that meets, uh, E, safety code. Uh, egress requirements. The floor area is not larger than half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. Um, and is subject to such restrictions as may be imposed by a municipality. Including but not limited to si- additional size restrictions. Um. And restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental, provided however that no municipality shall. Unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an ADU that is not a short-term rental. So just to give everyone a, an overview of the timeline, again, this is the first, um, public information session, we have had. And had, had advertised meetings discussing the, um, AD, proposed ADU bylaw already. Uh, this is one information session, there will be a second one that will be hybrid on March second of the Public Safety Building. Um. The goal is to have it before spring town meeting so that we can, as, um, the chair Jim had mentioned. Add some additional restrictions that the state allows us to, but they ha- again, have to be voted in, they're not something that's done by right. Um, so these will be some additional parameters, um, and the proposal will be to remove the accessory apartment section. Um, and replace it with the accessory dwelling unit. So, um, the proposed ADU bylaw again is nine hundred square feet or half the gross floor area. Whichever's less, the bylaw that we are proposing, sorry. Um, the bylaw that we are proposing allows it to go up to twelve hundred square feet, there's an extra zero on that, I'm sorry, it's not. It's not twelve thousand, it's twelve hundred square feet, um, by special permit, so there could be an additional review. Um, to have it larger than the minimum that is allowed by the state. And the current ADU regulations by the state, there's only one per property, you cannot file a special permit for additional, um, accessory dwelling units. And the setbacks, uh, and this is outlined by the state. Are, um, for lots under ten thousand square feet, five foot from the side and rear, and whether that's attached or detached. Um, and then for lots that are over ten thousand square feet, it would be ten feet from the side or rear, or the underlying zoning, whichever is less. Parking requirements, if you're within half a mile from transit, there's a zero parking requirement. And transit here, as defined by the state, is a bus stop, a subway station or a commuter rail station. Um, so. We'll have to go off of whatever the existing stops are in the area, um, and that is defined by the state. And then if it's over half a mile from any of the types of transit, you only have one space, um. No additional spaces would be required. And again, those are state parameters, those are, that's not anything, we cannot. Have more limitations beyond that. Um, we could offer less, but we can't require more. Um, the, there's site plan review required and that will be done by, um, the zoning board of appeals if there is a parking spot. And a special permit would be required if it's located within a floodplain or an aquifer protection overlay district. Or again, if you wanted to go over that minimum square footage. Um, and the goal, one of the goals of. The Affordable Homes Act, um, and ADUs is to increase year-round housing. Uh, so year-round housing means housing that somebody could live in year-round, not effectively not short-term rentals. So under our, um, proposed ADU bylaw, it would be prohibited. Um, to be utilized as a short-term rental as defined by the state, which is anything under thirty-one days, thirty-one days or less, I believe. Um, so it would have to be a rental beyond that, and that's again, what the state allows us to regulate. Those are really the basics of it, there is not that much, um, unfortunately, at this point, that we are allowed. To regulate, um. On our. Uh, at, at the municipal level, so I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has them, um. But I will, I wanna take, let, if the board has any questions, I think that's Jim, your, your discretion, how you want it, what order you'd like to do all of that in.
Yeah, I, I'd like to start by taking, um, any members of the board have any. Questions or concerns or comments, uh, and that will roll into, uh, public comments, so. Any members of the board have any questions, concerns or comments? Okay, seeing none, up, in that case, I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up to any. Um, any members of the public who wish to have any, uh, questions, concerns or comments, uh, voiced. Feel free to hit the, uh, raised hand button and then if you, um, are, are, are presenting. Just make sure that you turn your camera on if you have the ability to do so and then. Um. Say your name and your address before you start, uh, start, start speaking. So, uh, any members of the public wish to, uh, so I see Gail. And you're still muted.
Uh, Gail Seaver, thirty-five Outlook Road. Um, I'm actually part of the Wakefield Production Plan and the Wakefield Housing Trust. And, um, Sam, I don't know, do you, do you know how these ADUs fit in to. Uh, affordability? And also like where it fits in with the denominator of the, um, forty B calc? I mean, cause you figured that they're trying to make this a, I mean, can, can they, I'm thinking, maybe we could logically say they were supposed to be affordable units. Because they're kind of downsized for, you know. I don't know, just thinking that maybe they could be used for both the denominator and the numerator of the.
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. Um, the state hasn't given us a clear answer unfortunately on that yet. Um, in order for it to be officially listed on the subsidized housing inventory, the SHI. Um, it would need to have a full agreement with the state, um. They would have to be, I mean, have to go through the whole formal process. I, again, we have not gotten a clear response from the state, there is a requirement, so. Um, all of the ADUs that come out of this have to be registered, so every single one of these, um. It's not like we're, you know, we're not keeping an eye on it, but I think that they're gonna try to be cognizant of that as they're starting to calculate. Because these should be, well, the, the ones that are formally listed on the SHI are capital A affordable, they're formal affordable units. There are a number of lowercase a affordable units and in theory, the, um. the ADUs should fall into that category. The vast majority of them are not going to hit that um, substantially larger number. Um, that would make them unaffordable or unattainable for most people. But again, in order for them to be formally on an S H I, they're gonna have to have a full agreement. So we're still waiting to hear back clarification. I mean, lots of people have asked questions on how the state wants to handle this. Unfortunately, we don't have a clear answer yet. The um, the guidelines were only formally released. Or final, the final version was formally released on February second. So they may still be working out some of the details, um, because it's, it's possible, but again, it's gonna come down to a formal agreement to have it formally listed.
Gail, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, I see Peter.
Thank you. Peter Scott, twenty-five Avon Street. Um, forgive me for making you go through this portion again. Um, do I understand correctly that the ADU must be connected in some manner to the main dwelling?
Um, no, just means it, it is subject to, it's an accessory use. So if you don't have a principal structure, you can't have an accessory dwelling unit. Um, it can be either attached or detached. Um, it can be in a basement, or it could be in, like a, effectively like a shed, uh, in a dif- an individual standalone unit in the backyard or a garage apartment. Um, there are a lot of different ways that that could be achieved. Um, but it is permitted to either be attached or detached. It's just going to depend on your lot parameters. Because the existing dimensional regulations um, that apply, like your, your um, your building coverage, your F A R, your existing setbacks. It's not gonna make your primary structure non-compliant. And then you have to bring the whole primary structure up, or the principal dwelling, um, all up to compliance. It, it'll effectively allows you to keep your existing structure as is with no additional zoning variances or discretionary approvals. Um, in order to add on to it, or to construct something within, such as in the basement, or, I don't know, separate a, a, a portion of your house. Or to construct, again, a detached structure. It's just gonna depend on if you have the setbacks and the room on your lot, um, to be able to do that.
That's very helpful. Thank you. The uh.
Peter, one other thing I want to just add to that, sorry, is um, the way that this bylaw is written is that you have to have this accessory dwelling unit associated with a residential property. So you couldn't have like a auto repair shop or a gas station that has a shed that someone's living in in the back. It has to be on a residential plot.
Specifically, it has to be a single-family residential zoning district, which means any zoning district where single-family dwellings are permitted or allowable use, meaning they're allowed by right, by special permit, variance, waiver, or other discretionary zoning review. Um, so for us, that's general residence, uh, single residence, special single residence. I think neighborhood business and possibly one more. I had them all written down. Then I don't have my notes with me. I apologize. Um, but I can get it in just a second.
And that's all dictated by the state?
Yes.
So, sorry, Peter, uh, is that, does that?
I, I'm good. I was gonna make a wise crack, but now the timing's wrong. Never mind. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Uh, I see Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Brian McGrail, eighty-one Outlook Road. Um, thank you for your efforts in this. Um, I've had an opportunity to go through the proposed bylaw draft in detail. And I, and I support it. I think it goes in the right direction. I do have some um, technical comments that I think might be helpful uh, in future drafts, if I could share those. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, please.
Um, I, I, I guess the first is in the form of a question. I thought in the presentation, it was said that this is intended to replace the current accessory apartment um, by law, accessory use in the bylaw. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think you might want to take a look at that, uh, and reconsider it, because there are a number of accessory apartments under that old bylaw in Wakefield. And, and that bylaw um, does not have a square footage restriction of nine hundred square feet. Um, and um, and it also has requirements in it that when the property's sold, it has to be, um, it has to be assigned or uh, has to go back before the Board of Appeals. So there is an opportunity for those with relatives that use that, that might go beyond the scope of the ADU. That I think you should consider possibly leaving that intact in, if you decide not to. I think it's try, you try to address it under two C.
Yes.
And that doesn't do it. So.
If you, if you have some commentary on how to do that, the state actually explicitly says that if you had an existing accessory apartment. Because you can't have, the existing accessory apartments will be converted into ADUs. As part of this, as part of the state regulation. This is not a, a local thing. Um, they will no longer have their restriction for a relative. They, you cannot, that's no longer enforceable. Um, you also can no longer enforce any of the previous parking signage or whatever requirements. It all, they all would now be subject to the accessory dwelling unit and could exist as they are.
Well, I think, I think the state says that you have to allow nine hundred square feet or ha- or half, whatever is less by right. But it certainly doesn't restrict us or anybody from doing something else in addition to that. And that's what the accessory apartment does. And, and so it, the state regulation doesn't say you can't have an add-on to it. It just, it sets a minimum of what the town has to do. But that by law is specifically set up for families and a number of families in Wakefield, especially with elderly parents have taken advantage of that. And then how are you gonna convert that? I don't know how you're gonna do that, because some of them don't meet the nine hundred square foot requirement, which is required under the state currently. And um, so they wouldn't meet that parameter. And they're, they're restricted by covenants that are recorded at the Registry of Deeds that they were forced under that bylaw to put on their chain of title. So that really needs to be thought out and looked at in detail before you move forward with this, because it's gonna have a significant impact on those people that already have those units.
Well, help me, help me understand this, because they, so these existing units can no longer, uh, by the state regulation, the condition of family or, or relative occupancy is no longer um, enforceable for the state.
I don't think so, because the state calls it a protected ADU use. So you have to have a protected ADU use, which we're doing with this bylaw, but it doesn't say you can't have another ADU, ADU use.
It, it does, actually. I mean, it, it talks about, we're not, we're only allowing one ADU per site. And the first ADU is considered that protected use ADU. I can chat with the state, but from the webinars and the conversations that I've already had with them, existing units will be converted into an ADU. And no, they are no longer permitted to be subject to that occupancy, um, owner occupancy or relative occupancy clauses.
And Sam, I guess the question is, if that's the case, then would the existing ones, would they be con- ex- converted? And it would be an existing non-conformance based on the fact that they're larger than what is allowable under our current EDU?
I don't understand how they would be allowable, because they say that they have to be th- uh, three hundred square feet, but in no case shall it exceed twenty-five percent of the habitable air- area of the dwelling in which it is located. And I, I'm, I'd be hard pressed to believe that any of them are gonna be over nine hundred square feet, cause twenty-five, nine hundred, you know, twenty-five percent is.
Some are.
They're more than, they're more than nine hu- well.
They are. I've done them.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. Um, I mean, I'm happy to look into it, but.
It just has to be addressed. And I'm not.
Sure.
If, if they can become legal, I'm fine. I, I just don't want to leave these people out there hanging, because
Sure.
they have, they have restrictive covenants that are put on their title under the existing bylaw.
And I believe that those would be able to be removed.
Well, you, you, you don't just remove it, because it's gonna cause a clot in their, you know, in their title when they go to sell their house. So. So that's why I think C has to be expanded to incorporate that and, and figure it out. That's all. I don't wanna, we can, we can talk about it. I just wanted to raise that issue for c- concern or consideration. Um, just moving on, under one A, uh, I'm sorry, under one B, there's a reference to single-family residential properties. I would suggest that that.
Oh, did I? That would probably be a typo.
Yeah, well, let's just be changed.
Where did you say that?
That's under one B. It should be uh, properties in a single-residence zoning district.
Yes.
Because it's my understanding from looking at it, that you could have an ADU, for example, with a two-family house. I don't think there's a problem. It's not limited to single-family homes.
Correct. It's single-family residential zoning district.
That, that's a minor, but again, just pointing that out.
Yep. No, I mean, it's, it's a very good one. Thank you.
Um, okay. Then um, under two A. She'll not be subject to a special permit. I mean, you have that reference in there. I mean, that's the law, but I guess it doesn't hurt to have that in there. Um, and then if you go down to uh, two B, that says an application to obtain a building permit. I'll, I'll share my screen. It's probably easier for people to follow. So, okay, Mr. Chair, if I share my screen for a minute?
Yes.
Thank you.
There is a typo. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so it says in two B.
I, I wrote it down and it didn't save. It's, I believe it's the, I'll have to look it up.
This is an application of the building permit for ADUs. You'll include a site plan for elevation to meet all requirements as laid out by the Massachusetts. And we don't know what that is.
Massachusetts Architecture Board. Um, but I need to, to double-check that. That's the term.
That's fine. Just, you know, again, I'm, and I think that's the purpose of this meeting is to just get it cleaned up.
Absolutely, absolutely. Answer any questions as well.
Um. Okay, two C, I, I talked about that, 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 that deals with the current accessory apartments. Uh, two D, um, just to point out, that just needs to be cleaned up a little bit, because it says if the proposed ADU is located in a floodplain or aquifer protection, we don't have aquifer protection in Wakefield. So, so that's just not applicable. I think that probably carried over from the regulation or the statute.
Yeah, it's, I had spoken with our general counsel, who preferred that that be kept in. So.
Uh, why would you do that? It doesn't exist.
Uh, well, and, and speaking with conservation, they would prefer to have both, and the potential that one would be added in the future.
Okay. I mean, honestly, I've never heard of that. You're referencing a district that doesn't exist. So you would, if you added the di- district, you would put it in, but to reference a district just tells people it exists when it doesn't. So just a point. Um, and uh, then it says construction of ADU is subject to approval of a special permit if it's in one of those districts?
Yes.
So I think it's.
That's permitted by the state.
No, because Wakefield has a, hold on, if I could speak. Wakefield has a floodplain district. It's Article Five of our bylaw. So any construction in the floodplain is subject to Article Five, which requires a special permit under Article Five.
Okay, it's still explicitly listed in the, so I'm sorry, so if it's already, what are you getting at?
What I'm getting at is, well, first of all, it says approval of a special permit. It doesn't say from who. But I think what it, what it should say is if it's in a floodplain district, it's subject to, it's subject to approval. Or it's subject to the requirements of Article Five of our zoning bylaw, which is the floodplain uh, district, which requires a special permit to build in the floodplain district. That's all. I just think it just needs to, this is, this is just, this is just copied from the regulation, which contemplates that, oh, if you're in a floodplain, you're probably gonna need a special permit, because it's refer, because most bylaws require that, but it's got a reference to, to where the by, our bylaw requires that.
I think the reason why it's reiterated here and why it was reiterated in the regulations for ADUs, because otherwise a special permit is not.
What it's saying is if you play construction in the floodplain, you have to have, it has to go through the floodplain uh, permit requirement, which in Wakefield is Article Five of the zoning bylaw.
Sure, but it's, when you have, if you have two different conflicting regulations, where you have one saying that the protected use ADU is not subject to a special permit, then what happens when there's a conflicting regulation? And so that needs to be spelled out somewhere.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm suggesting it should say Article Fi- subject to Article Five of the bylaw, because that's where
Okay.
special permits required for floodplain. That's all.
Sure, but I think people might still get confused by that.
Okay, so um.
Anyway.
And then moving on to E, two E. Um, it says ADUs require off-street parking. Should be subject to site plan approval, missed by special permit granting authority, zoning board of appeals. And I just think Article one ninety twenty-nine, I just think that's a typo, um, because Article one twenty, article, that article of our bylaw. Look at our bylaw, Article, um, section twenty-nine is in the floodplain district.
Okay.
So if, cause if you go to one ninety twenty-nine, it's in floodplain. So it's like, that's kind of what's above. But I think this special permit, Sam, is more for a special permit for, you know, because it needs parking, which would probably reference section one ninety forty-four, wherever regular site plan approval is required in our bylaw.
Okay.
I mean, that's clearly an erroneous site. What the correct one is, I don't know. I can look at that for you, with you, to find out or figure it out.
Okay.
Because, do you see what I'm saying? Cause.
Yes, no. I guess, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm making notes while you're talking, so excuse me.
Yeah, and I can give you, I can give, you know, again, I, I'm working to get this true, so I can provide you these notes.
No, I appreciate that.
Might be helpful. Um.
You, we can, I can always look it up later. I don't need to spend other people's time tonight.
Yeah. And then I would say, um, you know, just for format, cause you know, I work on bylaws all the time. If you look at uh, three A. Where it says, uh, um, one protected use ADU should be permitted per, per lot in a single-family residential zoning district. I don't think you need to state what it is again, because it's already a defined term. Cause you have in parentheses, any zoning where a single-family permitted or allowable. But if you go into the definitions you prefer, you're proposing, you've already defined it.
Okay.
So it just restates it. Um. Let's see. So three C. Um, an ADU should exceed nine hundred square feet, or it has a requirement for a special permit. I would just suggest to say who's gonna grant that. Probably zoning board, like it was above.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it says, uh, uh, through a special permit, it should, you know, up above it, a reference zoning board. You know, so whoever it's gonna be, it's planning board, zoning board, it should be specified who's gonna do that. Then um. Also in that, Samantha, there's no, there's no definition. We didn't, you didn't carry over the definition of uh, gross floor area from the regulations. Is one of our proposed uh, def- uh, definitions. So I suggest maybe we should do that, because the state provided a definition of gross floor area, and you did a nice job of incorporating most of the required definitions for the draft, but for some reason that wasn't included. Okay. Uh, section three D, again, you, we, we, short-term rentals are defined terms. See, it's just stated again, that's just a consideration if it's needed. And then I had a question, if, if anyone's talked to the building inspector about um, this provision in three D. And I'll share it again. The references.
That it's, it's, it's conditioned on compliance with this clause. Yes. I have talked to him about it.
So have you talked to him about the requirement of the certificate of occupancy remaining?
Yes.
And he's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
We need, he asked for it to be, to be whatever, however enforcement was going to be done. Um, I, I've had a com- I've had multiple meetings with a number of different department heads, um, that it be explicit in here, whatever the conditions are, um, or enforcement or whatnot.
Okay, and then, we're stating in the presentation, I'm really confused where this ten thousand square feet comes from.
State regulation?
Where is, I, I don't see it in there, unless I'm missing it. Um.
Do you have the new version?
I do. I have.
The final version?
Yeah. I think I do. This is what I got off the website. I mean, they, they changed it.
If you got it off the website before January thirty-first, it would be wrong.
Well, this one might be wrong then, maybe that's why.
You had to have gotten it off of the website after.
One thirty-one, Sam, is that wrong?
Yes. The, the newest ones are, the official ones are dated. Um, I don't know, maybe it's not wrong. Hold on. Let me make sure I'm telling you the right thing. The official ones are dated. No, yeah, they're dated one thirty-one, but there is a section, um.
I couldn't find it.
Yeah, the ten thousand square feet.
I mean, I did a.
Ten thousand square foot lot. It's on the iteration I had. Maybe they.
I'm doing a, I'll do, I'll do a search for you, but like. I'm doing a, I'll do, I'll do a search for you, but like. Yeah, it's not, nothing.
Well, this is. It's from EO HLCs. Were you on EO HLC's page?
I'm on there. I mean, I, this is the public data regulations that were approved.
EO HLC released ADU regulations. Um. And those are.
Which are these, right?
I don't. I don't know. I'll have to look, but those are the ones I printed out. Those are the ones that I have. Those are the ones that I used all of the language. From. I mean, I got all the definitions and everything. They're literally copied from that.
Yeah, so I mean, um.
And that's the ones that I got. We got them all sent around an email, so that's where, um, where they came from.
I mean, I'll share my screen what I got, um.
I I'm looking at mine.
Hey, Samantha, Attorney McGrath, may I suggest that, um. You know, if there's any of more of these comments, I think we're getting to the point where I think.
That's fine.
Transmit them.
Yeah. But this is, this is critical because, because under, we have a twelve thousand square foot. Requirement, so I just didn't know where this ten thousand square feet, why that was there.
Twelve thousand square foot requirement for what?
For our, for our residential lots.
So there are existing lots that aren't going to meet that, um, and the, this has. Um, you can't have a minimum lot size requirement for a protected use ADU.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if this triggers that, is problematic for that, um, because you're referencing a specific lot size, and then it gives. It gives certain lots a benefit over other sized lots, which potentially creates a uniformity requirement under the, under the state law to be able to do that in in zoning districts.
And they may have changed that. I'll have to go back and look. I can re-review it later. Um, again, I want to be respectful to other people's time, but.
Yep.
It was based off of the regulations, and I'll have to look at the ones I had, um. And figure out where exactly they came from, um, because I can, I mean, I can copy and send that piece to you of of what I had gone over.
Then, um, probably the most important thing that that I just wanted to mention was under, uh, three I, and I'm going to go back to that. And I think this is good, um, but I think it just needs to be expanded on a little bit to comply with the regulation. Construction of ADU shall not require the principal dwelling be brought into compliance with current code. Um, which, by the way, I, you know, that was one point. I don't think code is a good word because that. Could be interpreted as building code.
Sure.
Um, so however you want it, but that's how I'd interpret it, and we certainly can't override building code, um.
No.
Neither, neither the U setbacks, lot size. And the only thing I was going to say on this, Samantha, was that. I think you should, um, consider adding, um, that it also, what it would say is. An exist, instead of just the principal dwelling. It should say an existing structure or principal dwelling because. There's a number of current accessory structures that don't need setback requirements. That should be allowed to have an ADU in them. In in the regulation, the regulation, at least, again, if I'm working off of the right one, but the one I got off of the, um. Of their website today is being the one that was approved.
Yeah.
Specifically says a municipality may not prohibit the development of a protected use ADU in an existing structure or principal dwelling. So I just think I needs to be expanded a little bit to be in compliance.
Sure.
You follow, you follow me on that?
Yeah, I'll look at that.
Okay. Um, and then the, the last thing I'll say is, um. On the definitions. I think this was copied over from the regs. I don't think you need this part because this, this is from the regulation, which talks about a municipality may. And I think one and two are relevant and good to have, but I think three doesn't make sense because it it really is what the reg, what the regulation said municipalities could do. And we're actually doing it.
I'll look at the, it's, it's explicit as part of their definition, so I'll, I'll talk to our attorney about.
That's fine. Yep, and then the last thing is, um, and you might be planning on doing this anyways, Samantha, but I think. Definition should be number five, because just like you did, um, you did such a good job on the MBTA bylaw and. That bylaw, just like this.
Oh, the definitions within, or just having to refer back.
It says, you know, you add a provision in that, and and to make these definitions part of this section, and then say the following definition shall apply to section. Blank and do not have applicability to other sections of the zoning bylaw, because some of these definitions are going to conflict. As to other components in our zoning bylaw.
Sure, I'll look at that.
That's it. So thank you, thank you for so much time. And again, I'm I'm trying to roll in the same direction, but just make sure that we all get it right.
And feel free to email me the specifics, so I can make sure I got everything that you had gone over.
I'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for the, uh, the time and the, the, uh. Review slash gut check, uh, Attorney McGrath. Um, any other members of the public wish to have any, uh, comments, concerns, or questions?
Okay, uh, seeing none, I will, uh, close item number four of the, of the meeting, the ADU amendment. Public forum and move on to item number five, subdivision rules and regulations. Uh, Mr. Noel. I'll kick it over to you.
Excellent, um. Just by, by way of introduction, um, this has been a, a long time coming and, um, uh, thanks to Matt for. Keeping this on the agenda and for, uh, getting this started. The whole, the whole purpose of sort of, uh, is to rewrite and clarify. Uh, the subdivision control rules and regulations to really set, um. Uh, clear expectations, um, and to sort of update things, but also put things in. As plain English as possible, so that there's really, there's less confusion and fewer missing items, uh, when. Uh, subdivisions are presented, uh, or proposed. So, um, what I've done is, uh, based on, on. Uh, Bill, or Sir Matt, and then Bill's edits, um, I've tried to annotate it, um. Um, our town planner and, um, our town engineer have edited, uh, the document, and this is what, um. Each planning board member was given, and I can share my screen and, um, run through the changes, but I, I think. The, the other thing by way of introduction is to say, um. You know, we, we want to itemize these changes and then have some public discussion about them, not requiring necessarily a, a formal. Uh, public, uh. Public hearing, um, and then, uh, and then put these into, into effect, um. So, um. If you don't mind, I'll share my screen, um. Any other, uh, sort of comments, uh, Matt or Bill, um, or Samantha before we start? Okay.
Just as long as we can go through what the most recent comments are, that's.
Yeah.
That's the important part.
Yeah, um. Okay, um, so, um. Yeah, I, this is, um, track changes, that's what all the red means, um. And you can see I've, I've tried to annotate it and, um, what, whatever public, uh. Version we put out on the, on the, the web, um. I'll, I'll include, uh, I, I either an addendum at the bottom of this document to id- identify all the track changes. Um, that, that have occurred or summarize them, um. Just very quickly, um, added a purpose and authority section, um, that seems pretty straightforward. The, uh, I think the biggest change in submission, uh, was to reduce the, the number of plans from seventeen. To five, um, and, uh, uh, also, uh, clarify that, uh. Digital files and CAD format are compatible with our, our systems, um, uh. We deleted, um, I think some outdated texts, um, a reproduction of the work plan showing traverse lines, et cetera. Um, and, uh, deleted the quote, uh, a statement signed by a registered land surveyor stating that the relative error of closure is not greater than one in twelve thousand. Um, in here, if you can see this, uh, updated language, need to confirm that, uh, so in. Subparagraph D, um, which is. Down here, uh, now, um. I have to go back and and double check my notes here, um. The. Again, um, kind of just updating the, the, the notice language, um. Yeah, um, this is down here under, under F, um, the, um. Yeah, this, the same standard for a pub, uh, for any subdivision, um, public notice, um, fourteen days. I think the, the first area of, uh, question or comment, um, Samantha had sort of two notes here and, um. Just, um, slightly below, um. Creating an in-house list or some sort of official certification that replaces, uh. Uh, this item I. Sam, do you want to speak to that at all, or? So, um. For any definitive creation, um. So that's. That's, uh, open for discussion, um, or, or we may not think it's necessary, um.
Sorry, I was on mute the entire time.
Oh, no. It was astute.
Yes, so what I was trying to say here is, um, it's helpful if we can refer back to some sort of official certification, meaning. Like, I don't know, the US engineering or Massachusetts engineering consultant for, I mean, regulations or. Sometimes they have like boards that govern them, or like the American Planning Association has their AICP certification, something like that, that is. Less arbitrary, um, because it's not. It might, it just might be helpful because that, that type of thing is referenced in other places, um, it might just be helpful to have that here as well.
Okay. All right, um. So, uh. Um, anyone, any thoughts? Any, any reaction? Identify future.
Sam, are you aware, is there a. Defined, you know, licensure or board associated with traffic engineering? Because for. Architects, right, you could, you could have, you know, if they have a sta-, you know, stamping authority, it's something you can pretty easily point to, but I'm not aware of if there's an equivalent for traffic engineering.
I don't know. Um, I didn't know if there's any, it just, it was, if there is one, it should be listed. If there's not. Then feel free to ignore the comment. It's just, it's referenced, some of those parameters are referenced elsewhere, um, in our, in our code and, uh. Just thought if we could have some sort of consistency, because right now, the way you're saying, it's just approved, it just doesn't, um. It just isn't specific. And explicit in here, and has the potential to come across arbitrary.
Well, I, I don't believe there are any type of traffic, um. Licenses, but what happens is during the building permit process or any type of, um, civil engineer, as it goes through, um. The fire department looks at it for turning radiuses, for stuff like that. That's usually, um, in my experience, what. It's gone through, because I've sat in meetings where, um, the fire chief or fire marshal will be there to make sure that their engines can. Turn and make it through, but aside from a civil engineer designing roads, we really, there's no other type of certification or stamp.
Okay.
Right, so no, no stamp, but in effect, we, um. We're going to receive and review and either approve the. The, the traffic report or not, right? I mean, we're disputed or, uh, or whatnot. Okay. So it sounds like.
I think just like anything else, if we need to reach out to the fire chief or to the traffic advisory council, or I, I think we do that. That's part of, like, our bringing ex- experts to help us make better decisions.
And I, I think more importantly, if, um. If it's a traffic consultant we've never heard of before and they don't have any track record. We could specify perhaps find someone else. Because I know for a fact there are some traffic consultants that. They're not really licensed professionals that are doing these. They, they have experience doing them, but. Um, they need to have some track record that. They've worked with bigger firms on other projects before.
All right, um. Does that, does that need spelling out?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I think if you keep it simplified, that, um, approved by the planning board.
Okay.
Sorry, Matt, were you going to say something?
No, just, yeah, I mean, we've, again. It, it's approved by the planning board, so if, if it's a new consultant that is just getting into the business, we could. We can, I would say, question them, and if we don't feel comfortable with them or. Something that looks askew, we could, uh, ask for. Uh, another firm to do it.
And I think Kevin, you were about to make a comment, right?
Yeah, this, this wasn't one of the changes, so it may predate many or all of us, but I was just curious how we came up with ten or more lots. For that language.
I don't remember, Matt. I think, I want to say that was in there.
Yeah.
I believe, yeah, it's carryover.
I, because I, I mean, Butler and a few others are the only ones that we've had that have been larger than. Ten, but I, I think it was already in there.
I was just thinking, and it, it may not apply because we don't always know how the you, the, the lots will be used, but. Rather than lots, units is what popped into my head. If there was a multifamily unit that was going somewhere, that could end up being. More traffic than ten single-family lots.
Well, that wouldn't be in the discretion of the, the board at that point.
Right.
Again, we're just approving the road and the lots, so. Um, in truth, we're trying to get ten lots anywhere in Wakefield at this point is, is extremely difficult.
Yeah, right. Okay. Uh, good discussion, um. Um, so the, the next, uh, comment, um. Uh, some, uh, just, yeah, this is a, a language change, um. Uh, coming up with a stock form for notice to town clerk, um. Sure, um. So, uh. Yeah, um. Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's, that's straightforward, um. Under, uh, D, we added, um, this new paragraph, um. I think, again, uh, really just for, uh. Uh, simplification and clarification, um. Um, in terms of, uh, uh. Matt, Matt went to great lengths to, I think, really try to unify, um, and, uh, streamline our general submission information, um. So that, you know, to remove some redundancy, um, Matt, uh, added, um. The, uh, limit of work line, um. Uh, as a, as a, a. A, a base requirement wherever applicable to each, uh, to each sheet, um, I don't think there's any other changes there, um. The, uh, we did delete, um, text from contact information, um. Uh, that felt unnecessary, um. Deleted other redundant text, um. Uh, here under, uh, thirteen. Here under thirteen. And then. We went on to define. A number, a number of sheets. The. Of note. Sam and Bill Renault propose creating a new yielder site plan. And. Let's see. All right, and. So.
Yeah, when you said the yielder site plan, that's that's a new requirement.
It's going to be a new sheet out. It's it's. It's item number five in this list, so the the first thing that that we added was a a demolition plan. If if needed or applicable. To add that to the to the review. Context plan is the. The same. Did want to know if in the context plan, we needed. Cross sections being a requirement. So. I think, Matt, you wanted to delete this.
Well, trying to do cross sections on adjacent properties. Data you're going to use on that is is has to be. Public. Public information, you wouldn't be able to actually go out and measure it, so I don't know how accurate or useful. Or why why would we even want that? Because. It's adjacent property, so.
Okay.
I would concur with Matt.
Yeah, all right. Good to call out. Under subdivision plan, we added a new bullet C, which is. Noting just to note existing walls and fences along the boundary line and right of way. Used to determine street right of ways and parcel lines. That's definitely something that that we've talked about in the past.
Um, I I. So. I I'm just thinking about that. You know. Showing existing walls on a subdivision plan may. Turn those into monuments going forward if they're not. Explicitly called out. That it's not a monument, so I would be careful of doing that.
All right.
So it's one thing to be shown on an existing conditions plan, but on a subdivision plan. You you want to be explicit that you're creating lot lines and they're defined by. Specific monuments and not. Oh, I I it appears it's on this fence, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to throw out monuments and hold the fence instead, so you have to be careful of that.
So should it be existing walls and fences established by monuments along the boundary line?
No, because they're not established by monuments. They're. They're just existing walls and fences, so. Yeah, an existing wall. Perhaps could be a monument if it's a fieldstone wall, so you don't have that, but a fence. I'd just be wary of that.
All right.
Because dating a fence and knowing if that fence is one shown on your plan, so.
All right. How's that?
Yeah, that that might be a little bit better there.
Okay. The fifth sheet is the yielder site plan and Sam, do you want to speak to this at all and? We may have to fill in some additional specifications.
Speak to what specifically?
Yeah, y'all put in a yielder site plan with the buildable lots shown without waivers. Is there anything? To. To say about that? Maybe that came from Bill Renault.
That's a bill thing. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for that one.
Okay.
And I I would kind of question why why you would need that.
Okay.
It it could, we could specify it if it, for some reason. We think the calculations are different, but.
I'm listening, yeah, sorry.
You know, adding that as part of the subdivision. Plan set, I I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing.
Yeah, I agree. The last part without waivers too, I. It's 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 a strange. Request.
Yeah, okay.
Is it basically asking for a alternate plan to the subdivision that's being? Requested to, you know, to show it without waivers? You know what I mean? Like you if there's a subdivision that you're looking to. To do, but you it requires waivers and you also have to put in a yield plan where you don't need waivers like. If that's not possible or or for whatever reason, like what in what information does that help us with?
I I don't think it helps with anything. I mean, the site construction plan tells us a lot. And just the site plan, so I I don't know if we need to. Maybe the wording in there because of buildable lots without waivers. I don't know. I think it just. Adds more confusion.
I I think this is is a kind of a carryover from the open space subdivision that was you you had to do that in order to prove. Now that, all right, you're gonna have the same amount of lots, but they're going to be smaller and it have more open space. I don't know if it's, it it's just an extra step that I I don't think. Needs to be done. You have to remember that all of this stuff does add cost to.
Yeah.
To whatever is done.
Got it.
I think you're right, Matt. I think it's from something else, yeah.
What else is in my list here? One of the, I think one of the questions from Bill Renault was, we we had wanted to expand the definition of tree planting. A plan to be tree planting and protection plan, and he wondered if this really should be subsumed within. An overall landscaping plan, and I I think our answer is no, we really, this is something. That's important to us that we do talk a lot about, and so I think it's worth keeping as separate. Not hearing any disagreement.
Thank you, right.
Yeah. All right, never mind the spelling. And sort of another comment that. Is a little undefined for me, and we've sort of talked about this somewhat obliquely. Is. Paper streets. The. You know, we. It does, it does come up. You know, that a paper street determines. Access or right of ways or or whatnot. The. My research was that paper streets cannot be accepted after twenty one years. And after twenty one years, the property automatically reverts to the abutting property. This is an area I feel really. Uninformed about. I don't know if if folks have additional thoughts, advice or direction.
I I'd like to say that this is fine because we we do take them. Each one, so it's a case by case, so that section two.
Yeah.
I think that says it all. I I don't think I change anything in here. Matt might have something to say about it, but I I feel good about it.
I I frankly, I don't understand why this is here. We're doing a. A subdivision that we have to approve everything on there. If they're trying to get access over a a paper street, they would have to pave it. Therefore, they would need a subdivision, so therefore it is a subdivision. I I think this is more intended for A and Rs. Where we've had some issues with, does that street? Actually exist? Yes, it's shown on on a plan and maybe they paved it last week. So. I I don't. I don't understand what the point of this is for a. Approval of a subdivision in roadway.
Matt, didn't we have a issue with this? Up off of Greenwood? What was that?
The gates of Greenwood?
No, no, not gates of Greenwood, up off of Greenwood. Street, the one that curves around, it was up there. You and I have walked the site too. Wasn't there an issue with, there was already a a paper road that came from the other side?
Yeah. And it went through a subdivision process to put that lot in.
Right.
They had to because there was no access. The lot had no access.
Correct, correct. There was no access, so the paper street. We so you don't think we need anything in there? About paper streets?
Not for a subdivision.
Okay.
There may be, we need something for a approval not required.
Okay.
I know Lovis Ave is is one of them where. It was at the end of. A somewhat paper street.
Yeah.
Which was poor access and. There was an A and R currently going on, so. We, you know, we can't, we we could not. Compel someone who's developing something to put a street in. On access that currently exists if it's substandard. So. Having this. In the subdivision section, I just don't see what it does.
Okay.
And in. You know, the status of it. What? Who's who's going to decide? You know, there's a legal process for the status of a street. I don't know how it. You know, need to have a review process outside of what the planning board is going to do with a. Approved approval of a subdivision.
All right, and it's not just that. A paper street that was identified fifty years ago that's never been developed. That just. Disappeared like I I I I took it to mean that. Something that's not. Something that's older than twenty one years, just. There's no, there's no right to develop that street anymore. Am I wrong about that?
They have a right, it would it would be this through the subdivision process. There is a derelict feast statue that people could. Take some of these, but it's a legal process that's outside of the planning board.
Okay, all right.
So this, so D could be removed completely?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I must just some compelling reason that I'm not understanding why it needs, why why it's here. I don't know.
Okay, all right. This is what we need to know. And. Yeah. And that's all the substantive changes. I tried to. Codify all the various amendments that have occurred, so. That's really it. I can get answers to these and come back. When? What do we think our schedule is and what what do we think our next process is? To put this to bed before April twenty second.
Why does it have to be put to bed before April twenty second?
That's that's the end of this term, right?
That's true.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the Matt's term.
Right, like of of all the things, like if there's. We don't, we don't, we don't want to be putting it on his grave, like, look, we finally did it thirty years from now.
I I don't think we should have any talk about. Whether a member is going to be here or not.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Um, I was gonna say, I think that the the process after, I mean. Frankly, I'm wrong, Theo, I think that we're we're pretty much there, right? I mean, we. I think I heard that the paper streets were thinking about removing or removing the. That section J from one of sections related to. And then we're talking about not including the yield. Plan.
Yeah.
So I think if we make those handful edits, I think we're at the point where. We just have to have a public hearing, right? And then we formally adopt it. These the regulations.
Yeah, we need to have. Public. Input on this.
Formal public hearing or just public forum like we just did with? And and ours.
I think it's best to have a formal public hearing, just.
Okay.
Just so it's noticed and no one's. Saying they did not, weren't unaware of this.
Okay, all right.
In the past, we've had formal public hearings. Is this also a case that? I I think this came up in a previous meeting, but does this go to the bylaw review committee? Or do we wait till after the public hearing?
No, it's not a bylaw. It's our rules and.
Yeah.
So.
Understood, but I I think in the past too, we didn't have a bylaw. We want to make sure. That it's not being contradicted by anything else that is being done. I I thought it would just be out of courtesy that we would share it to make sure they know.
You could do that? I don't think it's going to get looked at for probably a year. To tell you the truth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they've got, I think they've got other bigger fish to fry, and honestly, I think that we've reviewed this so many times. I mean, I. I don't think there's anything in here that's controversial unless others disagree.
Well, that's that's why we have a public hearing and, you know, a lot of things could be pointed out to us, so.
Yeah, let me rephrase. I don't think there's anything that would necessitate a bylaw review committee. Review that would then delay us being able to put this on on the books. Sam, I see you have your arm raised.
Yeah, my just my hand, but yes, the I just had a quick question through the chair. You had said you want. A public hearing. Do you, are you anticipating that this is like newspaper notice public hearing or just your traditional? Notice requirements for your meetings. Because you have to pay for those, that's why I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I think we were thinking newspaper formal notice.
I'm trying to think of what we did when we revised the A and R, I believe it, obviously, there was a. It was a smaller section, but this is, this is a significant. Update and rewrite, so. Maybe you get clarification from town council.
All right.
Um, Matt.
Best way to do it.
I recall that we did have. The announcement and the paper and everything for the A and R change. And we were still meeting in person then. And I believe Paul Revis, our former town planner, had everything and. I believe we went through that way. I think I was the chair at that point. I can't remember, but yes. That was a full public.
Were those the big changes that were done in like twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, something like that?
Maybe even nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah, there were, there were a number of big changes. I mean, the dates on. A lot of that, because I was looking for the forms. We have no digital version of the forms that were approved at that time. Just so you know, we only have scanned ones. We have no file of it that I can find, so I'm still working on trying to find it, but anyway. The the other dates to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I did find some of that stuff digitally, so I can go back and see too if there was a. Notice for the newspaper. Kind of use that as a template. If that. Is something that town council would, you know, advise it again as well. I can look at that.
I just don't see any reason why. I just don't see any reason why it would, I, I understand there's a, a cost associated with going to the newspaper, but I think that. With the amount of focus for subdivisions that we typically get. And the, 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 and we've been working on this. Number of changes associated with it, I, I would advocate that we err towards. More notice for this particular element, even though we. Even though we don't have to.
Yeah.
Sure, I can, like, again, I'll just look at it for a template more than anything, um, the. The bill for, um, the M B T communities is rather large, that's why I just. As an F Y I, um, but that's also publishing a map and the entire bylaw, um, was published, so. Um, I will, but I will work on looking at that, um, and let you know.
Yeah.
Or at least get, try to get you a draft.
And I, and I don't know if the entire text needs to be. Published, it, you, you need to point to where.
For zoning, it does, but I don't know if.
For this.
That's why I said I'm gonna, I have some stuff I have to look into.
For this, what I would advocate is that we would uh, write a link. To the, you know, to the planning board website and just basically reference that we're going to be doing it, you know, having a public. For a public hearing associated with. This bylaw or the subdivision rules and regs update, but I don't think coding every detail is necessary, I think just pointing people to the right. Uh, information in terms of the meeting and where they could get supplemental information if they're interested is sufficient.
Yeah.
Um, so in terms of, you know, scheduling that, right, so today's the eleventh, our next meeting is the twenty-fifth, which we currently have. Which I don't think is enough time. In order to provide that, uh, March eleventh is the in-person. A D U bylaw public forum, so I would advocate that we stay away from that meeting from a public hearing perspective. And then the next meeting is March twenty-fifth, which currently I don't have anything on the agenda, so I would advocate that we pencil. The public hearing for the subdivision rules and regs for that meeting, unless there's any compelling reason to. To delay further than that, but that gives us. You know, over a month from now in order to put that notice together and, and finalize the text, I feel like that should be sufficient at this point.
Yeah. Um, I, I would agree. Gotcha, um, alright, and so. Um, I think I can commit to. Gosh, by March eleventh for sure, uh, to have everything finalized, um. No, that's, that's too late, um, but I would, I would say.
I would like to have everything finalized by our next meeting on the twenty-fifth.
That, that's what I meant, um. Okay. Alright, um, alright, salute.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I don't know if we wanted. Does any members of the public that might wanna comment on what we have to date? And we're always open for feedback for certain things, so. I don't know if you wanna open it up?
Man, I really killed the audience.
Attempt to advertise in the paper. Uh, Attorney McGreal, I see you raising your hand.
I just wanted to tell Matt and Bill Spalding, it was Wildwood Ave, Matt.
Oh, thank you, I look back in my, I look back, I was looking for it.
I had to relieve the stress on that, I, I hate, I hate it when that happens to me, I'm trying to remember what it was, but it was Wildwood Bill, that's all I had.
Thanks, yeah, I knew it wasn't love, yeah, Wildwood, thanks. Yep.
Okay, uh, any else on item number five, subdivision rules and regs?
That's me, no, thank you. I'm good.
Okay, in that case, I'll move on to item number six, planner update, uh, Sam.
I don't have anything else for you, this entire meeting has been, I think, a planner update this time, um. But I do not have any additional updates at this time that I can think of for you.
Okay. In that case, move, item number seven, items not anticipated by the chair. Uh, I, before we dive into it, I did want to point to uh, Kevin, bylaw review committee. Uh, did you guys meet since the last time we talked and discuss the signage overlay?
We have not, we don't have a meeting until. The last week of February, I believe.
Okay. And then, uh, Sam, the other item I had on, I didn't notice it is, did we ever hear back from the Nahat? Project team?
I will send another letter certified, um, and go from there.
Any other items not anticipated by the chair? Okay, seeing nothing, in that case, uh, item number eight, adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, move by Kevin, seconded by Matt, Theo. Looks like we really lost Theo, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Uh, Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
I'll give Theo one more chance, Theo, motion to adjourn? Okay, well, I'm gonna say yes, so four, nothing, uh, not sure what happened there, so everyone.
Sorry, no, I, I'm, I'm back, I was.
No.
Coughing, sorry.
No worries, uh, motion to adjourn?
Uh, approved.
Yes, so five, nothing, uh, thank you everyone for the time and have a great night.